At this time Commissioner Langley is going to go down and have our invocation. Our guest has not arrived, so...
Let us pray. Eteral God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time and we come acknowledging that it's in you that we move and we have our being. We thank you for this opportunity to assemble ourselves together one more time, touch our hearts and our minds concerning your will and what's best for your people. In the matchless name of Jesus the Christ, I pray. Amen.
At this time I'll call the monthly meeting to order and I'll ask Commissioner Walker to lead us in the pledge.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, I'll remind the public, if you would like to have someone in your church or your religion say the invocation, all you have to do is call our clerk, Katie. We're down to the conflict of interest. Does any commissioner have a conflict with any of the agenda items tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to items for presentation. Delores.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We have three employees to acknowledge tonight for their service to Beaufort County. Our first employee would be Ms. Janelle Octagon, our Public Health Director with 10 years of service. Then we have two other employees that are not here tonight. We have Brandon House with Emergency Services, who has five years of service now, and Ms. Donna Wooler with the Department of Social Services, who also has five years of service. So congratulations to them as well.
Express our thanks. We're down to the public comments, and our first one is Wanda.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm here tonight to talk about planning and development in Beaufort County with regard to noise mitigation from shooting ranges. Please know that I'm an avid supporter of the Second Amendment. I have a concealed carry permit and I have been to several firing ranges myself. Our property is located five miles from Hunter's Point. We've never had an issue with this shooting range. We can hear discharge from firearms frequently, but don't normally consider it a problem. Hunter's Point hours of operation, as stated on their website, are reasonable. They're open Wednesday through Friday from 10 to 5, Saturday from 9 to 5, Sunday from 12:30 to 5, and they're closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. However, the weekend of March 10th through 12th, Hunter's Point did remind me to check out the Beaufort County Noise Ordinance in place for shooting ranges. I was not able to find any. On that weekend, Hunter's Point held a tournament. This tournament started Friday morning at 7:30 a.m. and under heavy fire, it continued for the next 12 hours until at least around 8:00 p.m. Again, the tournament was to go through Sunday, each day beginning at 7:30 in the morning, although Saturday and Sunday was limited fire and it was relatively quiet. Even though this sounds like a complaint, it would be largely unfair of me to complain about Hunter's Point, by which it appears is operating within their guidelines, but the guidelines are very generalized and out of the last thousand days or so, only one noisy day doesn't fairly constitute a legitimate complaint. More importantly, I am concerned about new shooting ranges in the area and the expansion of existing ranges operating under no guidelines in this county. As communities grow, noise becomes a problem. I was able to find that Pitt County has established shooting range regulations. Pitt County Planning and Development Services Ordinance Number 9, as written under the authority of North Carolina General Statute 153A-121, and if you're familiar with this statute, 153A-121 is a general ordinance-making power stating that a county may by ordinance define, regulate, prohibit, or abate acts, omissions, or conditions detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens and the peace and the dignity of the county, and may define and abate nuisances. Pitt County has stipulated in this the hours of operation as well as a 65 decibel limit at the property line of shooting ranges. This is typically achieved by the use of creating burms, burms made of dirt, gravel, soil, etc. In reality, most civilian accessible firearms emit sounds ranging from 140 to 175 decibels with a 12-gauge shotgun at 150 decibels, which would be what is typically used at the clay shooting range. I have no idea what they used on that weekend, but it had well exceeded that. Also, as an additional reference, for residential acceptable noise level during the day is 50 decibels. I thank you, as our community grows, as we hope it does, may I please ask the Commission to consider enacting noise reduction standards regarding shooting ranges and to generate appropriate regulations for existing as well as new shooting range operations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time I look and I do not see either our Senator or our Representative here, so we'll go to items for consent. Need a motion. Well, before the motion, is there any items that any of the Commissioners would like to have pulled?
I'd like to pull Item 1, Item 3.
Okay.
Item 1, just so the public will know what that is, that's the consolidated agreement with the Health Department with the state of North Carolina, and Item 3 is electronic health records subscription.
Any other Commissioner? All right, entertain a motion to approve the remaining items for consent.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the remaining six approved, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With all due respect, can we go ahead and handle those two? Janelle's eager, that way she can, we go ahead and knock them out?
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. The first one is the Health Department Consolidated Agreement. Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, I'm bringing this up simply for a, a part of it is to educate the public, and part of it, I'm concerned about what I perceive to be some new wording that's in this agreement that goes to the woke crowd and the woke generation and just some of the things that are in here. It's, you know, the local Health Department shall be committed to achieve health equity. What is health equity?
Well, I think public health's been doing equity for many years because equitable access is uninsured locations in the county. It's not just based on, you know, race and color, even though that's something we focus on as well, but it's pending lots of different things. But that's what equity is, is providing services that are acknowledged and someone who doesn't have access and making them accessible.
Well, there's already a part of the law that goes to accessibility and the fact that if services are not available, that the Health Department is to work to see to it that those services are provided. So are you sure this is not added because of the latest woke stuff that's going on in our community? Health equity doesn't sound to me like what that statute talks about.
I understand that, and it's actually been a large conversation about how Health Departments and Health Directors define equity based on someone else's definition of equity. I know that equity is a big focus and a big talking point. A lot of our agreements, such as our healthy communities, or like you said, consolidated, as well as, what was the most recent one? Oh, our accreditation. They're looking at altering statements in regards to equity and those issues. So yes, it's becoming a big focus topic, but even though the word is added, our statutes or the things that we're conducting wouldn't change because, like I said, public health's always been at equitable access.
Then why do we need this in this agreement?
I guess because equity's still important in everything that we do. We, as Beaufort County Health Department, have always treated our service equitable. Now, yes, it's in our consolidated...
That's not what the Constitution says. The Constitution doesn't talk about equity. The Constitution talks about equal treatment. Equity has become a meaning that if you're here and this person's here, that it's up to the government to bring this person up to this person. That's socialism.
I understand. So with equity, in my opinion, like you said, you know, you said equal, right?
No, equity, what is talked about in the Constitution is equality and equal treatment, not equity. Equity is a new word that the left has invented that has found its way into these documents.
So the equal part, in my opinion, is what we do, like I said, with all of our services, but that equity piece that I think brings to attention is if we have someone, AKA in Aurora, who has the same needs as someone in Washington, that equitable piece comes in that we ensure we get out to Aurora to assume those services for those, to provide equal services that we're providing to Washington or Bellhaven or F.A.
Well, that's twisted words because it's really not up to the Health Department to provide health services to people. We have a whole industry that does that. Socialism within the Health Department says what you just said, and that's my whole purpose in going through this exercise, is to show the public what is happening to these contracts and to these governmental dealings that is totally unnecessary because there are already laws that do the things that this thing is talking about doing. This same sentence goes on to say, shall be committed to, and I'm skipping over what I just read, to the inclusion of all populations affected by conditions contributing to health disparities, parentheses, including race or ethnicity, sex, sexual identity. What is sexual identity?
If you identify male, female, or however you identify.
Okay, why is it necessary to have that in this agreement?
Because we are held to hold everyone and give everyone the same treatment and services as we do anybody else.
You were before this agreement ever came into being, weren't you?
We were.
If we burned this agreement...
We lose money.
Yeah, well, yeah. By the way, full disclosure, I am on the Board of Health. The, and I did not raise these issues at the Board of Health meeting because it wouldn't have done any good. But the public needs to be aware about sexual identity is a big thing over at the Health Department. They need to be aware about what is happening to our society as the leftists and the liberals move into it.
I think, I mean, it's not just at the Health Department, though, that if any individual walks off the street, you know, we don't ask them what they identified to provide the services that they need.
So why is this in the agreement?
Because some programs ask us if there are certain male parts, they don't need a pap smear. You know, like, we ask, we do, I use that data as well in regards of tracking who we're providing services for, but anybody DSS or things of that such too, like, if someone walks off the street, if they can, within their ability or their programs that they do, they're going to serve those people, which is what the Health Department, the hospital, any doctor's offices, they provide that care.
Okay, going on to Item Number 6. Local Health Department shall not require a client to present identification that includes a picture of the client or at a minimum immunization, pregnancy prevention, sexually transmitted disease, and communicable disease services. It shall not require a client to present a photographic ID to get those services.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't that open the door to a lot of fraud?
Fraud in what, if they're like illegal immigrants or what fraud are you talking about?
Yeah.
Well, again, I think whoever, the Health Department's there to serve any individual that comes off the street, and I say that because once they come in our doors, our duty is to treat them. They're not going to be leaving Beaufort County, so if we don't treat them, other individuals will be impacted by that person, and we treat according to a whole person care. So if they are coming in and they present with symptoms with STDs or if it's pregnancy or things, our job is to provide them resources to better Beaufort County, so in the long run, we're not spending monies, huge amounts of money, on treating it after it's too late to diagnose.
We, who's we?
The county. Think of, like, if we have an inmate that is not in jail when we see them, okay, and they come in and get services with us to treat a preventable disease, maybe tomorrow they commit a crime, they go into jail, think of the potential that would be exposure in the jail system if they weren't treated with us prior to.
Yeah, but there are laws that apply to those that are incarcerated that say that we're required to give a certain amount of minimum care, which we give a lot more care than the minimum care. There are already laws that say that.
Right, so you're saying the minimal care, the Health Department should be less than the minimal care in the incarcerated?
No, there's laws that say the amount of care that we're required to give an inmate that's incarcerated.
Okay. And as a public health, I don't, it's not law, so I can't say that, but as a public health, the statute that we do is to provide accessible, equality care to each and every person that walks in our doors. Our job is to serve, just like if someone was unconscious in the hospital and they would take them to the ED, they're not going to wait to find a picture ID before they treat them.
Well, that's true, but this says they're not required to present it at all, ever.
They're not.
Okay.
We're going to treat the person and protect the county citizens from other preventable diseases by treating the person and not because of their status or their color or their race.
Is an illegal immigrant a county citizen?
No, but if they're living here, they're going to be in contact with other county citizens.
Well, see, you know, my whole purpose of this exercise that I'm going through is to show the redundancy of having all of this stuff re-enumerated in an agreement like this. There's, it's going to be on page number nine of this document. It talks about Medicaid requires that the local Health Department has the first right of refusal to provide CMHRP. What is that?
CMHRP, it's one of our care management programs for mothers and care management.
What do those, what do those letters stand for, though?
Oh, gosh. Uh, anybody got a Google? C mark? I can't remember. They've changed it. It used to be CCNC, so I do not remember the letters it stands for, but it's our Care Management Social Work Department. They work with mothers in need of care with their pregnancy and throughout that.
This is mothers, this is, this is women that are pregnant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And CMARC?
Yes, same thing. Mothers, it's just a different CCNC, CC4C, they changed their names. Both of those work with our Care Management Department, our social workers.
All right. Okay, going on down to D, it says, "In the event the local Health Department determines it cannot directly provide CMHRP and CMARC, the local Health Department shall notify the DCFW," whoever that is, and the DPH, Directors in Writing, and follow the Care Management Service Termination Transfer and Services Practices, cooperate with DPH, Department of Public Health, in identifying another local Health Department that can provide those services.
Yes, sir. So DCW, as he says, defined above you, but that's to, at the state, that's under that agreement that we operate that, those programs out of.
All right, the local Health Department is not subject to the North Carolina Human Resources Act.
Uh huh.
It says notifications should be in writing within the next business day and provide, okay, this thing's saying, I guess, if you cannot provide that, is that what this is saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Those are, those are the main items, but I think the public should be made aware that within these local contracts, coming down from the state of North Carolina, there's all this leftist, a lot of redundancy to try to push us into providing more services than we need to provide. Now, you can correct me, Ms. Director, if I, I'm inviting you to do that because what I'm going to tell you is what this contract is about, and I'm not sure that I'm that expert in all of what it's about, but this is something that the state of North Carolina invented in which they agreed to provide us a certain percentage of the cost of some services, and we entered into this contract. Before they came out with this master contract, if you will, there were a lot of little contracts, so they sort of rolled them all into one and came out with the master contract. Now, it is true that we don't have to enter into this.
That is true, but you will be also funding.
Well, you will lose funding for a lot of programs, and here's the other side of that coin. A lot of those services that are provided with that funding are also provided in the community by AGOP, by...
No, sir.
The Health Department, by other services.
No, sir.
Like what?
The CMHRP and the C mark.
What are they?
They are the care management programs. They are not provided.
For what, for who?
For pregnant women. We just talked about it.
Oh, okay, well, most pregnant women go to the doctor anyway. This is another social program.
Those without health insurance or those that are covered, they come see us because they need that care and those services and they don't want to pay the co-pay. We have more availability. We also have programs that support them with other educational prevention to decrease infant mortality and outcomes.
And I understand that all of those things are laudable, but I, and I'm not debating whether we should be providing it or not, but the public needs to understand when they start talking about social services and things the government provides to people who do not work and do not provide for themselves, that we are providing those services. And the way the system works is, the more freebies that you give away, the more freebies that you have to give away, so it is a growing, it is a growing problem.
When you say, oh...
No.
When you say freebies, you mean the services provided?
Yes.
But that's what the consolidated agreement helps us do, even though we're providing that service, we're getting reimbursed to be able to provide those services. It's not free.
Well, the county's putting part of that money in.
The CMARC programs, I don't know the whole financial breakdown, but it's a good amount of money that's provided, and then Healthy Beginnings is another care management that's solely provided by Consolidate or AA that the county does not provide.
Who puts up that money on the side to pay?
The state.
Yes, that's your tax money. You are paying for this one way or another, and that's what you need to keep in mind.
And she's an Alliance worker, so it's not a county employee.
It's all coming out of your profits. Okay, going on to another page in a Certified Health Director.
What page?
Page 14. Provided Qualified Laboratory Director, Item Number F up at the top of the page, and a Technical Consultant. Do we have a qualified health, a qualified laboratory director?
Yes, our lab manager's considered our director and our Director of Nursing oversees.
And do we have a consultant?
The consultants with the state that oversees our program.
Okay. So, but if we weren't providing all of these other services, we wouldn't really need a laboratory, would we?
Oh, yes.
Why?
Which programs, because there's, the lab covers a lot of things.
That's, you jump right on it and tell us what the lab's doing.
Okay, so everything from HIV, STDs, smears, you've got your regular pregnancy test and confirmation tests, a lot of things we have to utilize the state lab for, and that costs money because the in-house laboratory does not support in-house a lot of turnover in regards to that. So the lab is built specifically to ship and we have to pay that lab corps, and the lab corps is the state, and the state runs it, and they come back to us. I mean, we don't have the capacity without utilizing the state lab to do a lot of what we do.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at. We could, we could hire LabCorp to do some of this. There's other things you can do. We're, we're providing the service.
LabCorp doesn't do the test. They just take the blood, so you can't hire them.
They don't run a laboratory?
They don't, like, they're not going to swab individuals. You do the swabbing, you do the correct packaging.
Right.
So you can't hire them to do that stuff. You can hire them to run the lab, which we do, we pay a small fee because we do the packaging and all that stuff, but they're not coming in and swabbing and doing all that stuff.
Right.
So you can't pay them for that.
They're not doing the samples? They're not taking the samples?
Right, so they won't really be utilized if you're not having a sample to give them.
Okay, all right, well, the point I want to make on all of this is that this is a fully negotiable contract, is it not?
I don't know about negotiable, no.
You either take the state package or, or not.
Yeah, it's in a consolidated agreement, a lot of, like I said, a lot of the words that you've mentioned having an issue with, it's there to take or to deny. There's not an agreement back and forth of changing.
Well, take or deny, you mean we can take or deny parts of this agreement?
It is a consolidated agreement altogether, one.
We have to either take the whole agreement or none of the agreement. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, well, the public just needs to be, needs to know more and more about what is going on within the Health Department, where the money's coming from, and that an awful lot of services are being provided that, in my opinion, could be provided in the, in the community, and yet the taxpayers are taking on the burden of doing this. So that's, that takes care of that.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
So what I will challenge you is, I know it's hard to see, like, we might get certain funding or there's wordings that are for certain populations, but every funding that we have, it's geared for populations, but that only population is not the sole source of everything that we do. We incorporate it, again, on like an equitable line item in the sense of A1C screenings, okay? For example, we get specific funding for Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. We screen a lot of minorities because they are at greater risk, but when we... Minority Diabetes Prevention?
That's what he didn't do, no. I'm not beating on minorities, I'm beating on everybody.
Well, what I meant by that is the fact of, when we go out to screenings, that funding helps us screen not only X, Y, Z individuals, but anyone who's at that community event. So yes, funding might be dictated toward a certain wording, but there's a utilization countywide, not just population-based on a lot of our services that we, you know, give.
Okay, I'll finish with my part of that item. I have another item.
Okay, cut your mic off. Any other? All right.
If I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this agreement.
You're not in order yet, we haven't...
I mean, you're not in order. Be quiet, be quiet.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we got, we got a motion.
That's right.
I'm going to entertain a second.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Now, Randy, did you have a?
I can fit right in here. I'm guessing that this consolidated agreement was presented last year.
Um...
Pretty much.
It probably was in the works last year.
Okay.
Um, yes, but I would say it wasn't presented, obviously, to me until relatively recently.
Right, but would you say the wording was about the same?
Yes, again, since I wasn't in the position I am now, I can't say that how much has changed, but...
And obviously, we passed it.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to...
Okay. Janelle?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I have just one question. If, I have a few observations and I'll begin with a question. If a biological man came through your doors identifying as a woman and demanded a pap smear, what would you do?
That's a silly question.
Well, actually, no, actually, it's a very real question to a very real situation that could happen.
They don't have the cavity that you would need to swab.
Exactly.
Yes.
And that's why I'm wondering why we are getting all charged up in these, this wording that we, you identify, you know, people identify as different sexes. I've heard from some Democratic socialists that a man can have a baby, and they mean it. And what they're talking about is a woman identifying as a man getting pregnant, having a baby. That's what, that's, I figured that out eventually. It was kind of crazy, but I did figure it out. Now, this is what our children are learning in schools. This is the kind of nonsense and craziness they're learning, and, and I know I'm getting straight to the core. It's, is that in the agreement? I would like, these are observations.
What page on the agreement is you talking about?
No, I'm talking.
It's on the first page.
Okay, it's all, it's inherent within all of here, Mr. Chairman, but what I am saying here is that we're being, this is being forced upon us. Now, in Raleigh, we have a Republican-controlled House and a Republican-controlled Senate, and this is coming down from Raleigh. Am I right?
The consolidated...
Yes.
Yeah.
This is state of North Carolina with all these trigger words. I mean, they trigger me. When you start talking about equity, I mean, you look at the word equity, it's a longstanding word, and I was looking to see it being misapplied...
Right.
...misconnotatively arranged, and it's not. It says the quality of being fair and impartial.
Right.
Now, when Hood was talking about the Constitution, talking about Declaration of Independence and all the other great documents that were forged so that we could be up here governing as a self-governing body, that's what it meant. It did not mean that equity was to be used by people who really don't understand the word, start screaming and yelling about equity, next thing you know, they're throwing a brick into your face. This is what we're dealing with now, and what I'm going to tell you is the way people take words and they misuse them a little bit, and then a little bit more, and a little bit more, and then the word becomes something else altogether. Equity will be a derisive term before it's all over with. So what, what I'm saying is, what Hood brought before us tonight and before the people of Beaufort County, while it may be petty to some, is a very good thing. We need to know the way the terminology, the language is being reinvented in these contracts, because you're going to be held to these contracts, consolidated contracts from the state of North Carolina with a, with Republicans in both houses that could do something about this. You're going to be held to this, and we're going to be held to this if we vote for it. And the public... for it, and the public is going to be held to it. So it's just scaring me that it's starting to intertwine within the contracts that we are supposed to agree to or lose services altogether. Do you see the dilemma I'm speaking to?
I do.
I'm speaking further down the road, but that's the way I see things. That's why I'm elected to serve, to see.
I think, like I mentioned earlier, equity has, you know, obviously been become a much more talked about word lately.
It's a word that most people don't understand.
Well, I think, again, it, where you come from or what your background is, what you've been through has a lot of how you see equity as well.
Still says the quality of being fair or impartial. When you give one person greater access to this and that while taking it away from another person so that they can have that, that is not being fair or impartial.
Right, I, we are not taking away any services from.
I understand, but that's going to be forced upon you at some point when you least expect it. It'll come. Okay, we got, we got commissioners call for a question. All those in favor of the agreement, signing the agreement, raise your right hand. Those opposed, thank you, but don't leave yet.
Yep, I'm still here, all yours.
Don't leave yet. The next item is the Health Department Electronic Health Record Subscription.
Yes.
Yeah, going on to page forty-six, that subscription amount is blah, 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 forty-four hundred and eighty dollars a month. What does that do?
Sure. So when a client comes in, they have a electronic health record with us or they don't. If they don't, they obviously create one, therefore, they have other services with us. This also maintains their record from hereforth out until they die and then some years past that. It also allows us to share, like, if you came to us for services and then went to the hospital, there's a health exchange information where we're allowed to continue that care via other portals so that you don't have to repeat everything you've already said or your past history or positive test. It allows us to refer as well as track any of the programs that they're with us. So again, for data purposes or for bettering their health as whole person care. Plus, if they go to our C-Mark, C-HARP program, but they're also in our family planning, or if they also in our DPP class, that's all recorded there as well. It's just like your doctor's office. They probably use Epic, that's what the hospital uses.
Okay, so if we were only providing the minimum services that we were required by law to provide, we really wouldn't need this.
Minimal services, which ones are you referring to?
Any, the minimal services overall, STDs and.
Yes, sir, you would, because if I, if you came in as a positive contact with somebody and I have my record that they're positive, then I can treat you or make you a close contact where if I didn't have electronic health record, I couldn't make connections like that.
You made connections before electronic health records came along.
Not in my day. I was near. No, but, no, it's a lot easier because we can, we can flag clients, like, if they haven't paid us. The electronical health record allows us to flag their charge so that we, when they come in, we can get a payment before they leave as well.
Well, the point I'm making to the public is, we're paying over fifty thousand dollars a year for something that if we weren't providing more services than we're required to provide, we wouldn't need to begin with.
You would still need it for STDs, yes, sir.
How many STD cases do you have a year?
Ooh.
See, I have a pretty good idea since I'm on the Board of Health.
Okay. Can I get my phone?
Sure.
Okay.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred.
In the county or in Beaufort County Health Department?
Beaufort County initiates about three hundred STD cases a year.
Beaufort County?
Health Department.
Okay, all right, hold on. Sorry, I'm just pulling up a database. Stretch, right?
It's part of the job, to do the job.
You always stand up. I used to do that.
Well, service is not that great.
That's all right.
Hi, Ms. Haynes, do you know how many tests we do a year?
Let me say three hundred. Just to cap those.
It's more than three hundred, correct? Yeah, yeah. I would say it's more than three hundred, yes, sir.
Okay, how many more?
How about, how about sending that email?
Sure, I'd be glad to.
To the commissioners and answer that.
There's nothing wrong with establishing the facts because I sit in the Board of Health meetings and I see the presentations on STDs and things like this, so I have a pretty good idea about what's going on. You could run the whole thing with a three-by-five card index if you weren't providing all these other services. So this fifty thousand dollars goes to provide for the services that the Health Department is providing, and that's what the public needs to know. Now.
But we're not just STDs, though. Is that what you only want us to offer?
Well, you've got tuberculosis.
Yes.
Okay, and you've got rabies.
Which EHR would be needed.
You got rabies.
Yes, EHR is needed.
Okay, how many, how close are we at? How far are we going out?
I don't know. The, all the services we provide, that's what I'm saying, to say that we're limited to just sexually transmitted diseases would be.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the minimum, I said the minimum services that you would be required by laws provide.
Where is, where is it outlined in the law what the minimal services are?
It is by statute.
Which statute?
Well, look it up.
Well, no, you're asking.
We've got a lawyer over there asking, I don't know what all those statutes are, but I know that it's in the statutes. Look, I want to end this thing because it's beginning to get tedious. I want to thank you for defending what you're doing in your department so well. You have done a great job, and thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we need to entertain, entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
At a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. I mean, I'm sorry, raise your right hand. Those opposed, thank you. All right, we're going to enter the public hearing petition to name a road. Josh? Need a motion to go into the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Josh?
And I'll just explain who I am. I'm the planner for Beaufort County. I've been working with Mideast Commission for a little over half a year now. I know some of y'all probably might already know me a little bit, but this is my first meeting here with the Board of Commissioners, so I feel like I need to introduce myself. I'll just briefly go over.
Who has a question?
I've already talked to this, I've already spoken with this young man.
All right, so we had a petition to name a road. It was a private road. It was submitted by William Bradley, and it was to name a private drive that's approximately fifty-foot in width. The subject road connects to Riverside Road and is located approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty feet south of the intersection of Riverside Road and River Road. And there's an attached aerial map within the packet, as well as the attached application for where he applied for the road naming. The E-91 ordinance requires that you suggest three road names in order to apply. After discussion with Tony Garrus, with Land Records, we determined that out of the three names, and the three name suggestions was Coastal Drive, Caroline Drive, and Coastal Way, and staff has determined that the applicant's first proposed name, Coastal Drive, does not duplicate any other existing road name within Beaufort County in the order that it had any sound alikes. And with the public hearing, of course, we would approve, we would recommend the approval of the applicant's proposed first choice of Coastal Drive for the road name. And do y'all have any questions about the actual application of the process or anything?
Motion to approve.
Whoa, 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 Katie, we did not have anybody signed up for a public hearing. Pardon? Okay, any, is there anyone here that would like to speak to that? To the renaming or the naming? It's not renaming, but the actual naming. We have to do this for a minute?
Okay. Motion to come out of public hearing.
All right, need a motion to come out. We'll get, add a motion, need a second, and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the name.
Coastal Drive. And a second.
Is this the first read?
We, this is only one time, Ed, one time. Did you second?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to rename it Coastal Drive, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
It was an easier one.
You did a good job first time here.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is emergency services, the EMS six remount procurement. Chris and Jeff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I wanted to bring before you today some options on repairing an EMS truck that we discussed during the budget presentation. If you recall when we met with you last during that setting, we shared with you an EMS unit that had recently had a deer strike. We were expecting some pretty significant damages and assessments coming from that. We have received those, and I know we are a little out of norm of approaching you at this point in the process. We typically try to address capital vehicles and things like that during the budgetary process. Truthfully, there are some things that are coming down through vendors and through some pricing that we wanted to share this with you now as a potential cost savings. So this particular truck is a 2012 Chevrolet Duramax. It actually was one we acquired through the dissolution of Bayview EMS. Currently has about a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. It was on our radar to approach as a replacement vehicle in the coming budget process. So we know just based on mileage, it's coming time to do something with this vehicle. As we look at those options, we're really faced with several of the options that we outlined on the second page of our agenda, starting with the least expensive, at least for the moment, would be just repairing the existing damage. We're expecting that to come in somewhere between eighteen and twenty thousand. That's a bit of unknown because they haven't torn into the front of this vehicle yet, so we don't know if there's any damage to the structural components other than just fenders and skirting and things like that. And then obviously, that wouldn't correct the issue of it being an older vehicle with mileage to begin with. The second option would be remounting the current box onto a new chassis, which is what we're proposing before you, and this is our recommendation. We're estimating that to be somewhere around a hundred and forty thousand, but again, we have not gone through the formal bid process, so we can't speak to that with exact numbers. A third option would be, you know what, we scrap this truck altogether, we go after a demo unit. That really comes into the availability of those units and the pricing, but we would estimate that what we're seeing in the market right now to go between one ninety to ten, somewhere on those demo units. And then obviously, the last option and most costly would be purchasing a new truck altogether, which is, we've shared in the budget process, coming in around three, three hundred, three thirty for an equipped ambulance and a delivery date of about two years. So what we are bringing before you now is an option to allow us to go through the formal bid process of soliciting bids to remount this truck, remount the existing box on the new chassis. And again, the reason we're bringing that to you now and not in the budget process is we're, we're expecting some significant price changes from all the vendors we've talked to come July, not only on the price of chassis, but the availability of chassis, as well as the typical markup on all the other items that we see as the budget year cycles over. To give you an example of that, what we're being told just through the vendor line on chassis, everyone is telling us to estimate about a twenty percent increase on the cost of what we're seeing now if we wait until next year. So we wanted to bring this before you, get some guidance on you as to, from the board perspective, how you would like to proceed, and I'll be happy to take any questions you guys may have.
All right, questions for Chris? Well, which option are you recommending?
So we're recommending a remount. We take the existing box that's on the, on the chassis now. It's in really good shape. There's some minor refurbishment that we would need to make to mount that onto a new chassis, and that would essentially give us a new truck. And that's the recommendation that we're going with now. And full transparency, in order to get these prices, we had to talk to a vendor, right? So we're not trying to circumvent the bid process, but to get these numbers, we had to talk to a vendor. They're estimated at one forty. Now, again, we would follow the procurement process and all the bids that we may get from it, but we're estimating it to be around one forty if we act now. If we kick this to the next budget year, we're expecting an increase, and as to how much, we don't know.
Well, I don't have a problem with going ahead with the bid process of putting it together to see what it looks like. I mean, I think that's just brutal.
I'll entertain a motion unless somebody else has got a question.
So moved.
Okay, and a second. All right. Any other discussion?
Well, I have one thing.
Okay.
Would you send me the vendor spec sheets for the truck that you intend to mount this on?
Yes, so it would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we would establish that, those bid specs and publish it out, so we certainly don't have an issue of sharing that with you guys.
Well.
It would be a.
I want to see the brochure that they're proffering to you. I don't care so much about your specs.
You want, you want the, say, what we're looking at is, it's on a Chevrolet chassis. You want the bid specifications of that chassis?
Yeah, I want the, the, the fact sheet, the spec sheet that the person who's manufacturing the vehicle is giving you and saying, this is what I'm offering to sell you. I want that sheet. It's not a typed-up sheet, it's glossy, it's a sales item.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, very similar to what we did with the last truck that we brought before you and had purchased, where we, once those bids were received, we had copies of those attached and side-by-side comparison for the board to see where these are the specs that each vendor.
Yeah, but they, they gave you salesman specs. I want the technical specs. I want something more technical than that. I want something that tells me things like what the front end is rated, the load rating on the front end of the truck. I want the specifications for brakes and a whole bunch of other things, because what you gave us last time, I think, was what I call the salesman's glad-hand handshake. I'm selling you a red car. No, I want to know about the engine, and I want to know about the front end loads. I want to know what the rear end will carry.
Certainly.
I want the tire sizes.
Yeah, as, as we receive that information back from the vendor, we'll do our best to make sure that information includes the specifics you're looking for, and we'll happily share it.
Yeah, but it'll be a sheet that's got the manufacturer's name on it, identifies the model, blah, 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 blah.
Yes, sir. We'll do our best to do it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public works. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I have two items on this one agenda item today, or two awards. As you recall, for the past few years, as part of our capital project spending, we've had projects to redo our roofing. That's something that the Commissioners considered to be a high priority, and so funds have been allocated for that. So what I present to you this evening are new roofing projects for two of our buildings, the first of which is the Tidland Building, which, if you're familiar, the Tidland Building, or what we call the Tidland Building, is the old Tidland Mental Health, which is located off of Highland Avenue just behind the hospital. This building houses the Board of Elections, the Veterans Department, Adult Corrections, as well as outpatient and inpatient services through East Carolina Health. REI Engineers has been working with us on all of our roofing projects. They provided professional services to inspect, design, and bid the replacement of the Tidland Building roof. The REI issued the bid package and bids were received on March second. REI recommends that a construction contract in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars be awarded to McCorr Metal Specialists for Roofing Sectors One, Two, and Three, and that totals out over twenty thousand square feet. So this is not the entire building. We divided it into six sectors, so this will be four of the six. When we bid this, because the bidding environment is so volatile and it was so difficult to determine or to give a, have an estimate of what the bids would come in, we divided it into different sectors. So that total of four hundred and eighty-four thousand includes Sectors One, Two, and Three. We bid that as a base bid and then alternate so that we would look at how much. We did that as a base bid and then alternate, so that we would look at how much, the amount of funds that we had available, and then we basically continued selecting as long as we still had money in the pot, then we could do another section. So that allowed us to get up to the three sections. So no additional funding is required, so I would request approving contract award to McQuarrel Metals Specialties in the amount of $484,597. You'll see in your agenda book, it has the bid tabulation with all of the bids that came in, as well as the letters of recommendation from REI Engineers.
How much a square foot does this come to?
For the Tideland roof, it's just over $24 per square foot.
Oh, really? Okay, all right. What kind of a roof are we putting on?
It's a single ply thermoplastic roof.
How long is it guaranteed for?
20 years.
Okay, they're going to provide us with warranty documents, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir. It's part of those documents.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second? All right, and a second. Now, got a question, John?
Where will these funds come from?
From the capital, oh, sorry. That penny that we set aside each year, the tax rate, and move over to the Capital Project Fund, it's part of that allocation.
Okay, so, okay.
So a portion of the funds were from fiscal year '22, where we had what we classified as phase one, but because the bidding environment for petroleum-based products was so volatile and so high, REI recommended that we postpone the bidding of that until the prices came back down, and so utilizing funds from fiscal year '22 as well as fiscal year '23.
Any questions?
Yes. How much are you saving waiting a year on the petroleum products that create that single ply?
I can't give a full number, but I can compare in some bids from three years ago. It came in probably 10% less, actually, not less.
Three years ago? And it is imperative that we put the roof on now?
Imperative? Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Okay, any other question? All those in favor of approving the contract for the Tideland Building, raise your right hand. Okay, you want to go to the second one, which is on this building?
Yes, sir, the second one, the Financial Services. Again, REI Engineers did the inspection, prepared the bid package, received bids. REI recommends that a construction contract in the amount of $80,305 be awarded to DLT Roofing, and again, the bid cap and award recommendation is there. This is actually the roof right above our head, so it's not the entire roof of this building, because again, this building is actually two buildings that can join, but it is, we go from Second Street to the back of the parking lot, the same width and the length of the building. And that comes out to a total of just over $29 per square foot, but it is a much smaller building, so it's 2,678 square feet, so you would expect the unit price to be higher for a smaller roof.
Motion to approve. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, question. All those in favor of the contract for the Financial Services roof, this part of the building, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
We're down to the financial report. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to give you a quick update on our sales tax numbers as well as the levy collections. And remember, the reason we focus so heavily on these two revenues is they make up 80% of our general fund budget revenues, so that's why we always want to be tracking them very closely. So first, you have your handouts before y'all talk to you about the tax levy. You've got two pages there. The first one is labeled Tax Levy Year 2021 Collection Report. So I wanted to show you the collections as of April 3rd today compared to last year. So the first one you have is last year, we were at 33.673 million collection, or 97.34%. And then if you flip the page, today, for this year's levy, we're at 34.471 million, or 97.15%. So that is a difference of $800,000, and all of that we can contribute to growth, because you can see the collection rate is actually slightly down 19 hundredths of a percent this year compared to where we were last year. So any questions about the tax levy before we move to sales tax? Okay, moving to sales tax, that's the legal sheet you have before you with the graph you used to see in the C each month. Wanted to share with you that we received our report on the January collections today, and they're going to be coming in at $1,021,568, and that's up 13.2% from our collections the same month last year, which were the 902,270. Now, the state was up 20% statewide, so we're down a little. We're only up 13% compared to the 20% statewide. And also wanted to note about this month's collection, there was a snafu at the state level with their tax system in January, where they did not issue any refunds to nonprofits. So that $1,021,000 is slightly inflated. So we receive about, or they issue about $500,000 a year in refunds in Beaufort County to nonprofits. That equates to about $42,000 a month. So if we adjust that number, normalize that number, it should have been about $960,000 out of $1,021,000, and that's going to be taken out of our next month's distribution. They'll double up next month on the refunds. So having said all that, sales tax remains strong for the year. For the seven months we have collected, we're up 11.4% for the year. The manager and I were on a call, I believe it was last Thursday afternoon, with the League of Municipalities, and the league takes the lead on doing revenue projections and kind of helping us figure out, you know, what we might want to project for the different types of state revenues. And they were saying, the number they gave us for next year was 6.7%. That's kind of the number statewide, but obviously, we have to look at ourselves as an individual county and apply that to ourselves. So the challenge, I think, for the manager and I coming up the next couple of weeks as we're developing the budget, is to determine, you know, what growth factor are we going to put on sales tax? Because you could see historically down there, you know, in 2018, we grew 4.6% from the previous year. In '19, we grew 8.4%. '20, we grew 4.6%. '21, we grew 14%. '22, we grew 9.8%. So we're, you know, we're having a difficult time determining, you know, where are we going to be at? We usually feel like it's normally around 5%. So there'll be things we'll be talking about in the coming weeks, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that rate, really, what's driving it is inflation.
It is.
You know, you take half of the inflation rate and put it on it, and you pretty much got it.
Inflation, and then, over the past two years, a lot of the growth is the supplemental COVID payments that individuals receiving, were receiving over the years. So I think all of that is pretty much flush through the economy at this point. You know, will we have a recession? I think some economists do believe we'll have a slight, you know, adjustment, and how will that affect our sales tax? You know, we'll probably do some modeling to try to determine what that might look like for us, but it's going to be a challenge for us. I do want to tell you that, I want to go in, but you'll notice, we are going to owe the schools some more money for sales tax for this year, just like last year, because the way we budget the capital allocation to the schools is we take 30% that they're owed for Article 40, we take the 60% bylaw that they're owed for Article 42, and that's generally how we budget for their capital. And then, of course, we get to count the school debt payments that we're making on their behalf. So if we're running a surplus of $1.2 million on our sales tax, we've got to pay them the 30% and the 60% on that sales tax when we get all those actual numbers in. So you're going to be expecting a budget amendment from me in June when I have a better idea of what that amount will be, but it's probably going to be about the same as it was last year. It's probably going to be close to half a million dollars. Any questions about sales tax?
Any, any question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're down to Commissioner Revolt's nonprofit budget discussion.
Okay, you have in your packet a sort of proposed policy with regard to nonprofits. We don't have a policy currently, and I think it's important that we ensure that the funds that we are providing to nonprofits are being spent in a prudent way for the taxpayer of this county. The state law allows us to provide funds to nonprofits. In fact, it says that it may be for, it must be for a public purpose, that support the delivery of needed services or programs that the county is unable to or does not provide, or that the agency can deliver in a more effective or efficient way. Currently, I took and looked at all of the nonprofits that we are providing funding to, and you saw that list in there. There is very little reporting from a number of them that you can find, and so I went into the IRS website for nonprofits, and you can see that there's total revenues less than $50,000. You get no information on what they're doing. So what I'm proposing, I guess, is that we have a policy that ensures that they provide us information on what they're proposing to use the funds for, and how those expenditures actually went, and what the results of their spending has been. The policy that's in the book is one that I collected out of several other counties, and I would recommend that we ask the county staff to take a look at all these and come back with the proposed policy for providing funds to nonprofits.
Well, at one time, we had a policy that you had to submit the 990, and that you had to submit some kind of financial statement every year. I don't know who's supposed to enforce that, but apparently, that's gone by the wayside.
Actually, we do have four budget forms. Every year, we send out budget packets to all of the nonprofits that are currently getting funding from the county, and any nonprofit that asks to be funded by the county, and we request information like user information, financial information. So we have most of that information from the.
We never see that at budget time, do we? Yes, we do.
Do we? It's in.
It's in the budget. Yes, sir. We don't publish it in the final budget, but it is in the manager's recommended budget that y'all review. Yes, sir.
What's the wishes of the board?
Well, in addition to that, there are some nonprofits that never ask for the money that we budget.
There are some, such as the recreation departments, our municipal recreation departments. They have historically been funded for 20, 25, 30 years, as far back as anybody can find records for, and they don't necessarily turn those in. I guess we don't historically think of them as nonprofits like we might some of the other agencies that we fund, but that is true. I mean, if we need to get information from them, also, we can.
Taxpayers paid for me to go to an essentials of county government class, which I did shortly after being elected. What they're going to require now is per the school of government. I suppose it's within the general statutes. We have an attorney, he can advise us. We also have administration that can advise us properly, because what I'm hearing heard from the school of government is that we will need to have an agreement with whomever we give money to, and we will have to perform oversight, and you will be liable for them. And you will not be liable to them, excuse me, but you'll be liable to taxpayers for whatever they do or don't do properly. So the general statute is fairly new, and I think it was designed that county governments get out of the charity business. So I think you're, if you want to go down that road, you're going to have some additional work to do as county commissioners.
Can we get that statute in front of us at the next meeting?
There's a lift of that statute in the, right here, in that.
There's a list of statutes, but I'm talking about the specific.
Yeah, the one that's specific is right there.
That Commissioner DeTheridge is referring to.
I don't know what he's referring to. It's, I have not, I looked and I didn't see it.
So that's why I'm asking, can we get that statute in front of us at the next meeting?
If Commissioner DeTheridge can pass that along to us, he went to the class, so he should be able to. If he can just give us that, we're happy to. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, why don't you guys do it? It's what you're paid for.
I can call.
Call the school of government.
I will call the school of government and ask them what statute it was that y'all discussed in that class.
So, John, it appears that.
I, I guess I, I need more information about what we're getting right now, because I don't think we're, I don't think we've got proper oversight, but I will, I will get with Anita.
I agree with you, Commissioner. If you've got your budget, like you could go back and see what they normally send, I think the problem comes in is follow-up. And what Stan is saying is we're going to have to have oversight in the future, but I try my best to keep up with the NCA, N C, A, C, C, and I've not seen that, so. Okay. So we're going to, we're going to continue to work on this.
I will cave in my motion.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, but I will say that I agree with you. We have never done anything but give money to our buddies in a lot of these programs, and the review criteria that you have listed at the bottom of the page, I think is very good, because it hits the target on all of this stuff. We did, we did adopt policies related to the financial information. Seemed like that was primarily for fire departments and EMS. Okay. We're down to Commissioner Richardson, illegal trash dumping.
Yeah, well, I'm getting a lot of calls, in particular, about a site that is out on Magnolia School Road at, near the roll-off out there, that there's a lot that's being severely trashed, and it looks horrible, and people have stopped and dropped a few loads of trash on the shoulder of the road, and they've driven into the lot and dropped stuff, and bags of trash, and this sort of thing. And I've researched this to the point that I understand that the county is somewhat limited in what we can do. There is some posturing we can do if you're willing to do it, but as a board, you've never been willing to do that. And what this comes down to is the only way that the county would have to enforce something like this is if we went into and passed a trash enforcement ordinance. And my understanding is that Public Works was going to bring us an ordinance. They presented us with a draft of the ordinance, and I would like to get back into that and look at the ordinance. I'm not interested in getting into a big staffing program. We were talking about the possibility of having someone a half a day to chase around and follow up this kind of stuff, and I really think we should get into it, because that particular lot, for some reason, is targeted. The owner lives in New York City, and with that, I guess my first question is, can we get the draft ordinance back in front of the commissioners?
We can.
Okay, that can happen at our next meeting. We need to look at it. Once again, I'm not interested in a big comprehensive program, but I'm interested in something that gives us a little bit of heat, because this is a problem. Now, I will say this, the lot is so bad that I've taken photographs, and I intend to contract the owner in New York and see if they're willing to cooperate in cleaning up the lot. And if they're willing to cooperate in the lot, cleaning up the lot, we'd probably have to do it with me personally with that person, but I would expect the board to cooperate in whatever they could do to get this thing accomplished and done.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Hood, I have talked to that owner as well. I mean, they inherited the property. Property is vacant. They are subjected to people who don't care, and what happens is, these people who don't care, they've come with a load, they find that it's closed down, they decide, okay, I see a bunch of trash over here, I'm going to dump it, I don't want to carry this back home. First of all, these folks should have made sure that the facility was open, and secondly, they shouldn't dump their load right there. No pun intended. What I would like to see is the sheriff's office take some initiative and try to find a way to catch these people. You can probably do a lot with cameras now. I don't know how enforceable it is, but it's, you can see, if you have the right camera, you can see these things happen. In my opinion, this woman, whose house is vacant, and she'll never be able to do anything with it because of what's happening across the street, and people dropping stuff off there, the county may not be responsible. Having said that, I think the county should aid in cleaning up that lot to some degree.
Well, I'm hoping that if she's willing to sign a warrant, that we can probably get some, some, some action on this particular item. I know how to develop the evidence.
Have we ever explored having some kind of a digital sign at the ones where we have most problems with, that says, you know, please don't dump on local property, or cameras are watching you?
I think there's cameras on. I mean- We have not. I mean, we have cameras at the sites, at the actual sites, so we can see those things.
But it's not going to cover the lot that they're talking about?
It's not going to cover the block, and people are going to be sorry, and people are going to be sorry. I mean, no matter what you explain to them, folks who are going to be sorry are just going to be sorry. This board's taken action before. We, the Public Works went out there and got names. The county attorney wrote letters to people and said, your name was found in this trash, you better get out here and clean it up. So we took some of that action, and you'll also see that the Public Works Department in, in the upcoming budget is proposing some additional funding to try to put in place some, some county services to where we would not go on private property, because you kind of open up a can of worms when you start going on private property and cleaning stuff up. But where we would look, where DOT will, where DOT does right-of-way clearing, picking up trash, and then they've cut that back significantly. They do it about once a year or twice a year. We would supplement that on our own around the convenience sites in an effort to try, since we recognize that unfortunately, some folks are just going to be sorry, and, and although DOT's cleaning it up occasionally, we would propose to you that there'd be some additional funding there for us to contract with somebody to get it in the off six months to try to at least maintain a little bit of it. But there is enforcement issues that can be taken, so, you know, we can continue to do those things. We'll get the, we'll get the draft ordinance back in front of you.
Well, I, I think the enforcement issues are, are very worthwhile, because once someone gets a citation, then the word gets around real fast. I think going out there and cleaning it up, you're just asking for more stuff to clean up. So one of the most effective things I've seen on clean roadside is on, I think it's VOA Road, where you go towards Greenville, and you turn to the right, and you go down toward the creek down there.
That's VOA.
Yeah, that it. They've got a sign up in the front yard that says, "Trash Camera in Operation." And that roadside's pretty clean for about 500 feet on each side of that sign.
I think, I think when we get our hands on this ordinance, we should make sure that the penalties are substantial.
Yeah.
I saw a sign somewhere the other day, a $1,000 fine. Is that, that's a state statute, I guess. I'm assuming that's not a local ordinance, $1,000. Okay, you want to go to your no purchase on electric cars without board approval?
Yeah, well, I found out at the last meeting, you know, at one time, every vehicle that was purchased came before the commissioners for approval. The nouveau Republicans got into power, and they changed that, so that we don't see any of that anymore. And I was surprised at the last meeting, when the issue came up on the Health Department vehicle, that we had purchased an experimental vehicle. Battery op, battery-powered vehicles and battery-assisted vehicles are experimental, and the county should not be purchasing these things, because we are using the taxpayers' money to buy vehicles that have no intrinsic afterlife whatsoever as far as disposal goes, and from the environmental standpoint, the batteries and these other things are serious problems. So what I would make, I'm going to make a motion that the county purchase internal combustion engines only, and that we not purchase experimental vehicles for any purpose whatsoever.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. All of those in favor of the motion not to purchase battery-powered cars or experimental vehicles without the specific approval of the Board of Commissioners, raise your right hand.
There we go.
Those opposed? The, if I remember correctly, Hood, the car, the car that, that we disposed of was 14 years old. I think it was, it was the first hybrid that ever came out.
Yeah, just from perspective, I don't think, I don't recall us purchasing a hybrid since I've been here.
It was 14 years old, if I remember.
The Health Department has several Priuses that they bought many years ago. I don't recall us, I mean, the Health Department and DSS would be the only ones, because everything else we do are work trucks, but I'm not aware of any recently that we had, so.
Oh, that's no consequence to me, just long as we're not using taxpayers' money for experiments.
Okay, Hood, we're going, we're going, we're going to take a break, and we'll be right back in about 10 minutes.
Do you need to confirm with your attorney?
Okay, we're back from the break. We're back to Commissioner Richardson, closed session request.
Yes? This, this item's been batted around for a while, but I have refined my closed session request, and so I will read it as follows. And I've given copies to each commissioner, to the manager, and to the county attorney. Commissioners to meet with law enforcement about privileged and confidential information as described in General Statute 132. This request complies with General Statute 143-318.111. To prevent the disclosure of information that is, and that's quoting from the statute, this is what it says, "To prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of the state of North Carolina or the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes." 132 of General Statutes is the statute that's accepted here, because it states that law enforcement and certain other public safety entities have the right to withhold certain information that if disclosed would hurt the public interest. So now, please take note that, you know, what, what, the problem that we've had in here up till now is, this board has tried to prejudge what was going to happen. You don't know what's going to happen. You don't know what law enforcement's going to tell you. You don't know what law enforcement's going to say, so you can't make a judgment until after you know that. Please take note that only law enforcement can decide what information is privileged or confidential. You can't, because you don't have the information. Neither this board nor any member can make that decision, because only law enforcement has the information. So I have a motion that we invite the sheriff at a, at a future meeting, have a closed session with us, to tell us privileged and confidential information that involves law enforcement in Beaufort County that he sees fit. That's a motion.
Second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Discussion.
I'd like to say something for a change.
Go ahead, David.
Not having heard from Mr. Richardson for two meetings now that this has come up, and our offices are literally feet apart, I decided to go on and do this. I sent an email to Sheriff Hammond, and I said, I do not, I said, I don't know exactly what you're supposed to do, but I read him what is in our book, that the sheriff is to present confidential information about narcotics and criminal activity in Beaufort County to the commissioners. And then it references 132, 143, General Statutes 132 and 143. First of all, I would say 132 is, is a, covers things from public records to public works, and it is several hundred pages long, at least 100 pages long. Chapter 143 covers state departments, institutions, and commissions to internal auditing, the Executive Budget Act, to compensation and expenses of commission members, travel reimbursements, and commissions on children with special needs. So, and that's literally hundreds of pages long. Sheriff Hammond said, in response to my inquiry, I do not have a specific topic to discuss. He's here, he can, he can say that he, that's what he said. The original request from Commissioner Richardson was to conduct a drug awareness training similar to one he attended in a different venue. I haven't been asked to discuss a case or investigation. I hope this finds you well. This was March 27th, and I got that from the sheriff. So I'm, I'm not sure what we're doing here. If this is a rewrite, it doesn't say a thing about the sheriff, not even mentioned in here. It's mentioned here with this 132, 143, which makes no sense at all.
You're the attorney, are you saying the law makes no sense? Because I've-
Here's what I'm saying, sir. I am saying, General Statutes 132 and 143 are hundreds of pages long. You obviously didn't know that. You drew that. You did that right there, and you sent it to all these guys.
I've read parts of the General Statutes that apply to this situation. I don't understand why you think that the legislature intended that the sheriff never talked to the county commissioners.
I don't intend, that's fine with me. He can talk to you anytime he wants to. He's sitting right there.
Well, in closed session, he has, he would, he, I can't speak for him, and I'm not trying to, but he has information, or would present us information, that my understanding is, he does not feel the public, the general public should have. That's privileged and confidential information. That's what the statute says. So I don't understand why you're so against this, and why you're fighting this so hard. What, what, why, why don't you, why don't you want something done about drugs in this county? Why are you defending drug dealers? That's what you're doing.
I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
I'm sorry, but we're not going to agree on this. We're going to agree to disagree, because I, your behavior tells one story, and you're saying one thing. Now, are you-
Can I finish what I started to say to start with?
Yeah.
Okay. Whatever you've done here, and you put it on, on the commissioners, is confusing at best. You said things this way, you said things this way, and tonight, you walk up and with this right here. What, what is it? Doesn't even say that, doesn't even mention the sheriff. And, and I'm not doing, look, I've got a job to do too, okay? My job is to make sure what we do here is legal, and what you're doing is not legal.
You have continued to drag your feet on the issue of drugs and the communication with sheriff and the commissioners, which of information that, that law enforcement, I said law enforcement. I've tried to define, redefine this thing since, since you've been so cruel, so that even you could understand it. I quoted the law in this thing. I did not make up something of my own. I, that is, "To prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential." That's what the statute says. That's not what Hood Richardson says.
You are quoting the statute that you don't even mention correctly.
I copied it right off the statute book. Are you saying I can't copy?
That's what it says. I agree, that's what it says. But you're asking, all right, let's, let's don't lose track of what we're doing here. This is supposed to be a closed session.
Yeah.
Okay? And first and foremost, as I told you a month ago, the telephone still works from your office to my office. Call me, tell me what you want to do, and how you want to do it, and we'll figure it out, but you don't do that.
All that you've done is oppose everything that I have tried to do. The law is very clear on this. I don't need to negotiate with any staff member for something that's good for Beaufort County. I don't understand why you're dragging your feet and claiming the law is confusing to you. You've got a license as an attorney. If the law is confusing to you, then you really need to sit down and do some serious thinking.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, let's, let's get back to the Commissioner Rebels.
I, I think Sheriff Hammond can help here by telling us, can you disclose information regarding an active investigation?
Yes, if he wants to.
Yes.
I would advise him to. In no time will I discuss any law enforcement business on an investigation that is-
Thank you.
Is not completed, or, and once the disposition's been completed, then it'll be available, you know, to those who-
Okay, so if investigations have been completed or prosecuted, that's all in the statistics that we already got.
That's correct. Yes.
Yes.
Sheriff, if either one of us wanted to know anything about what you're doing, as long as it wasn't interfering with a current investigation or open investigation, would you sit down and talk with us about it individually?
Yes.
Okay.
Providing it has no, providing you're not-
I admire you for saying that, because all, I don't want to, I don't want to know what you do, and if you come in this, and if you come in this closed session with us and say what's going on, the day is Monday, by Wednesday, it'll be all in Pitt County and everywhere. So you're doing the right thing by saying no.
Randy?
I know the school board closes on a pretty regular basis, but they're talking about building security, which really needs to be kept in a close, and so, I mean, I don't know that you need that to close for, but they do close for that, and I don't know what the numbers are and everything, but you can't just spell out what the security plans are for each school, and so that, I know you do close for that.
I've lived my whole career on the military environment on a security, security clearance level, you know, for official use only, secret, top secret, and that's the way I feel. At my office, it's the way I'm running our business. Now, what leaks out, we'll be dealt with, but other than that, we're going to deal on a security clearance.
Will you-
mentality.
Will you do me a favor? I know the association, you guys have an attorney. Have you, have you bounced this off of the association's attorney as it relates to-
I have not.
Going in closed session and-
I have not, but I will.
Okay.
Definitely am.
Are you, are you formally requesting to go into a closed session with us?
No, I was, no, sir.
Okay. All the questions. All right. Let me make a comment here. What I'm hearing from this board-
What I'm hearing from this board, especially from Commissioner Booth, is you want to do business like we've always been doing business in Beaufort County. When Booth says, would you tell me if I came to your office and asked, we want to get behind the building to that little group back there, and we want to do business in the back room, and that's what I'm trying to avoid and trying to stop. It is vitally important to the success of the drug war in Beaufort County that the commissioners be involved, and the commissioners know certain things about what's really going on, so that we can act as a cohesive body. It totally defeats the purpose of law enforcement and the public good for a commissioner to be in the back room with the sheriff getting his little bit of information. That's asking the sheriff to corrupt himself, and you are certainly corrupt when you start asking to do that.
I'm assuming, since you're the brand new sheriff, you've not had that kind of discussion with any one of the commissioners?
I have not.
Thank you.
Could you cut it off?
If I want, I'm gonna inject this. Commissioner Richardson's original request did come from a request to do a drug awareness, and we met that with Captain Russell.
Yeah.
And a question, if I recall, came from the board, is some, whether it's Richardson saying, would you go into a session, because Captain Russell said, there's some of this information I don't want to give out, because it's harmful, maybe.
Confidential?
Well, not confidential in the nature of a case or an investigation, maybe the information of the drug paraphernalia he was using, or the makings of an illegal drug, the ingredients or the processes. He didn't want to go into a live view on that. But as far as a case or investigation, I have never spoke to any one of my investigations outside of my office.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed.
Let me add this to this conversation, if I may have just a minute. I've seen the information was given, and a lot of the information was given in a public venue that could be disclosed to the public. But I'm not gonna disclose the information, because, to give you an idea of what we're talking about, because it would be harmful to a lot of people in the public. I have a few more ethics than that. This board needs to sit down and consider its Christianity, and it needs to consider its ethics.
But I'll leave you with, with something to think about. This board is open anytime you need our support and conversation.
Outstanding.
And if you talk with the association's attorney, and our attorney is on board with that, we'll do whatever we need to do to make sure things are going according to what you need.
Thank you.
And support.
And training, as far as training and awareness, we're here.
We're not shutting, we're not shutting that door.
You're doing a good job.
Not shutting that door.
Thank you. I hope every one of you will echo that.
The only way accidents happen is when we get in other people's lane.
Well, this is one lane that I would, I would leave it to the sheriff to use my discretion, and I appreciate that respect there. Hope you respect.
Okay, then to stormwater rules and how to proceed.
We've had this stormwater issue out there for a while. It should have been presented to the commissioners two years ago, when the process first started, when we had a way of negotiating so that we could help the law and help the people of Beaufort County. We're a long past that. So my question to the manager is, give me the events on how this is gonna play out, and when this law is gonna become effective, because I'm not gonna do a lot of research at this point, because it is totally useless. This is a fixed, done deal that has been signed off by officials in Beaufort County. It is not in the public's interest. We failed to represent our people.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional information from what I provided at the last meeting. I'd be glad to reread that, if you'd like for me to.
I think we all remember. David's mic is blinking.
The picks have become unfixed.
May have to unplug it again, I guess. All right, we're down to closed session. Katie, you want to read, send the closed session?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, before you do that, with the board's permission, you've got three items associated with that. If you would permit us to, can we handle the personnel matter first, the economic development second, and then the attorney-client privilege third, so that I can bring staff in on those two first?
Yes.
And then let the attorney close it out?
Yes.
Is that appropriate? Thank you.
I don't know that you can have a session just on attorney-client privilege, you still got to give a subject.
You don't? We can have a secret meeting, is that what you're saying?
No, sir.
Wow.
No, sir, the statute, there's certain, in fact, let me read it to you real quick. Now, so let me read it real quick to you. When it talks about going into closed session, it says, there are, it says, the statute provides that a closed session may only have a motion adopted in this session by a majority of those present. The motion must state the purpose set out by the statute that permits them to go into closed session, such as to consider matters related to expansion of industries or other businesses. In addition, two of the purposes require a more detailed motion.
Excuse me, guys.
First, if the purpose of the closed session is to discuss a matter that is confidential by law, the motion must state or cite the law that makes it confidential. And second, if the purpose of the talk with an attorney is about existing litigation, the motion must identify the parties to the lawsuit. Those are the only two you have to elaborate on if you want to. The statutes allow you, under this exception, to do that. Those are the only two that you have to provide additional information for.
Okay, need a motion? Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor going into the second session, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're gonna go into back room, if anybody would like to stay.
I say the back room.
The conference room. Okay, we're back from closed session. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Add a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Seven zero.
Thank you.
It's still seven zero.
Okay, we, Brian, would you like to present the personnel matter?
Yes, sir. So, based on the discussions, the county has a cost-share agreement with North Carolina State University on cooperative extension employees that provide services to the county. And in cooperation with NC State, it's our recommendation that you adjust the administrative assistance position at the cooperative extension by $2,361 with the appropriate cost share between the county and NC State covering that difference.
Entertain a motion to, add a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
No, no, we got two comments from commissioners.
Okay. I thought we'd heard all the comments.
No, I don't got a comment.
All right.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna read this, and I'm gonna give it to Bart. I am very concerned.
I am very concerned and disgusted with the callous, arbitrary, and capricious behavior of the majority of this board tonight. The public pays high taxes in this county and deserves better representation to comment the use, sale, and illegal industry that goes with all non-prescription drugs. With attitudes like this, is it any wonder our youth are dying from overdose? And if not dying, ruining their lives and the lives of their friends and relatives? The effects of illegal drugs on children alone should spring commissioners with any conscience into action.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.